Good evening, I'd like to call to order the business meeting for the Board of Directors for the Tacoma School District, Thursday, January 9th, 2020. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Bonbright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I move approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, and are there any questions or comments? Hearing now, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Well, for the third time in the last few weeks, we get one of the most exciting nights of a school board meeting, we get to deliver an oath of office to a school board member. Director Leon, it's your turn. Hard fought victory, and you get sworn in now. You were appointed and went to the great extent of running a campaign and the joys of winning, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We're pleased to have you continuing your service with us. And do you have anybody here tonight that you'd like to invite up to deliver the oath?
Yes, my daughter is going to help me with that. My son had a little too much homework, so he's missing out on stuff, yeah. My mother and my wife are here too to observe, so maybe take a picture or something.
Well, I'd invite, how about you and your daughter to the podium?
Okay, thank you. My daughter, who's a senior at Stadium.
My name is Madison Leon. I state your name.
Aye, Enrique Leon.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County, State of Washington.
Pierce County, State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Hey Dan, can we get a picture? This is the first time all five of us have been together sworn in.
It's kind of exciting. It's exciting to look at them all.
Can we do this? I don't think we can do this. We have a school board, take a selfie.
So I'm excited to continue to serve the kids, the staff, really the whole community. I think that our work that we do here is really important work, and we are a part of a big team, including parents and support networks in our community. So I'm excited, the challenge that we have in front of us, and I'm excited for our new board that we have here and to work with some really exciting new members. So, thank you for the opportunity to the voters of Tacoma who entrusted me with this.
It is nice, you know, we've been through kind of an odd 12-plus months with losing a member of our board, and appointments, and elections, and reelections, and I would argue that there is no more important elected office than serving on a school board in terms of the direct impact we have on kids and families. And I am confident, this group of five had a three-hour retreat yesterday, and I think it was a good start to us coalescing as a true team to carry on the great work that's been occurring in Tacoma for the last decade. So I am, it is nice to officially have you sworn in, and I think now reassuring to the public to know who the five of us are that are going to be making these hard but important decisions, and I think it's a great way for us to begin 2020. So congratulations, and I look forward to a fantastic year with the four of you. We'll move on with the agenda. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. 6.1, recognition of seven Tacoma schools on Puget Sound Business Journal list of top 100 elementary schools. Mr. Vopel.
Thank you, President Hines and members of the board. The Puget Sound Business Journal publishes its third annual list of the top 100 elementary schools in the region of Pierce, King, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties. The methodology that they use gave the most weight to math and English language arts scores on state standardized tests, but also factored in economic and racial diversity, classroom size, and teacher experience. And based on the Business Journal's methodology, I'm pleased to announce that seven of our elementary schools made the most recent list. We have representatives from each of the schools here tonight, in some cases, several team members from each school. The schools are spread out all across our community and come from very diverse neighborhoods. As I announce each school, I'm going to have the folks representing that school come up and line up right here behind me, and then a representative from each school will have an opportunity to address you and talk a little bit about what's in the magic twinkle dust, the secret sauce at their schools that makes them so successful. So let me start with number 77 on the list, Fern Hill. At number 67, Lowell. At number 64, Downing. And up from number 75 last year to number 23 this year, Jefferson. Up from number 29 last year to number 21 this year, Edison. And up from number 69 last year to number 13, Skyline. And finally, making the top three for the third straight year, at number three, Stanley. This doesn't just happen, this is really a credit to teamwork. These recognitions for these schools on this particular list aren't individual awards. It takes great collaboration and effort to make these happen for these schools and for the kids they serve. So to address you first is Scott Munson from Fern Hill.
Well, welcome, and thank you for having us tonight. This is really an honor for us and my team. Come on up, team, so they can see who you are. Our secret sauce is relationships. We work very hard on relationships, building those relationships, and building them with a lot of depth, so that we not only know the children, but we know the families that are working with those children. And by working with them very closely, I think, and our staff working super hard, that's our secret sauce right there. Just hard work, lots of relationships.
Good evening, President Hines and the school board. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here this evening. It's a true honor to be honored as one of the top 100 schools in the state, and also one of the top schools in the district. And so, as a principal at Lowell, I think one of the things that we try to really do is we are a community. We are a community within a community in the North End, and honoring the huge parent involvement that we have at Lowell, with about 200 PTA members strong that work hard every day to really just do the best that we can for all of our students, but also to move the bar for our demographics, because we are a high-income school, but that sometimes gives us greater challenge to move the bar even higher than the year before. So we try to meet the needs of all of our learners, including our high-cap students, all the way down to students that have IEPs that are second language. We have 50% of our students that don't live in the Lowell area, and that was really interesting to me when I got to Lowell. I was really curious about where our students are located, and we're a school choice school, so many of our students come on a waitlist, because as you know, the housing prices in the Lowell community are astronomical. So it's a wonderful blessing to have many students from across the city, across the town, and from even out of our district. And I just want to say thank you to nominating and looking at Lowell as one of the top schools here in the district and in the state. Thank you.
So before you do anything, I have to take a picture with my staff, two of them, because that's two of the best things that happen at our school, but there's a whole bunch of them. If you can see them behind there, they're kind of like ghosts, so they're not there. So hang tight, because I did bring my son, who's now a substitute teacher in Tacoma, and I have to have him take a picture too. So here we go. Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone, thank you for having us here. I do have two of my most awesome staff here. I have Beth Rougelet, who is my counselor, and one of the great things we've done in Tacoma have put counselors in schools to help us be better people. So she works with my staff, and she works with our kids. I agree. Keep on clapping, keep on clapping, there you go. But I'm really glad that she is here tonight, because I think that has made a difference in our schools, so I appreciate the work we've done with that. And then my awesome fifth grade teacher, Karen Barnes, who has a teammate that kids don't know which class they're really in, because they share children. So if you ask my fifth graders, "Who's your teacher?", they'll say, "Is it Barnes or is it McDougall?", they don't really know. And they build that relationship, what did I say?
No, it's McBarnes.
McBarnes, that's it. They build that relationship, and I'm going to go off of what Scott said, relationships are everything. If we can build that our schools are a great place, a safe place, a good place to learn academically, our children will succeed. And one of the things I say is if you read, you will succeed, and they truly believe that. And so, we're constantly checking on what they're reading, checking their math facts also, and their writing, but if we can really get them reading, students will do much better in school. And we do that all the time, as well as talk to parents about reading, so that's very important. But opening up those front doors so they can walk in, they feel comfortable there, they know people. Our staff work on goals with families, as well as with our children, so they know where they have to go, and it makes all the difference in the world. I'm really proud of my staff. I went to school at Downing, and I'm the principal there, and I tell the kids that, so if they come to my office, they say, "Now, I know every trick in the book, because I have been in here before as a kid." But it's really interesting for the families to realize that I have that part in my heart for Downing, because I was there as a kid, and these guys are just there, and they do every single day. These two especially, they'll be there at 7:00 in the morning, and sometimes I have to kick them out at 6:00 at night. Even though their day goes 8:15 to 3:45, you'd never know it, because they're always there, working hard for children. So thank you for this honor today, and we appreciate you.
Hello, I am Jim Ball, proud principal of Jefferson Elementary. Like I said, you're a tough act to follow, but Dan, we're 23 on the list, right? 23, Jefferson? Just confirming?
Oh, come on!
Good, alright. We're another in a long line of great 23s. Jordan, LeBron, David Beckham, so I'm proud to represent Jefferson as a part of the legendary group of 23s. So secret sauce, you know, we just got an amazing climate and culture at Jefferson. It is calm, it's relaxed, it's positive. People genuinely love coming to work there. Parents genuinely love sending their kids there. And I know that sometimes can sound like just words, but I get to feel that every single day, and it is a blessing to come to work in that community. Hard-working staff, they keep their head down, they don't care who gets the credit, they just work crazy hard, and kids are just kind. We promote, we tell all our kids and our adults that if you can do two things, if you can work hard and you can be kind, you're going to be successful here, and you're going to be successful in life. And kids live that, and adults live that too. So again, proud to be here, proud to represent Jefferson, it's a great school, it's a great place, and again, we're coming on up on the list next year, going higher, so thank you.
My name is Henry Smith, I'm the principal of Edison Elementary, number 22 on the list. I have to give all of the glory to my staff. We have just an unrelenting staff. They truly embody what it means to be educators. It's not a job for them, it's a lifestyle. They spend their own money, they come to work early, they stay late, just an elite group of professionals, truly. And no matter how good we do, no matter how much progress we make, one of these people comes into my office and says, "Okay, Henry, here's what we can do to make it better." And they constantly push for more, they love our kids enough to ask for great, wonderful things. They, like myself, are outraged that we live at a time where the area code in which you were born can have a direct, predetermining effect on your success. These people don't let that happen, they're absolute heroes in my eyes, and I couldn't be more humbled and proud to be able to work with them every day. That's our secret sauce.
Good evening, I am here pinch-hitting for Gina Rainbolt, who would love to be here and was very sad that she couldn't be here. Unfortunately, she had to take her son to college in Hawaii. So she was struggling with weather, you know, but the sun's starting, she's going. So if she was here, I know that what she would tell you is that this is a group of very professional, very determined, very hard-working, very professional teachers. And she would tell you that great teaching causes great learning to occur, and there's great learning going on at Skyline. And I always say, that's the place to keep your eye on, because they are growing, they're the picture of continuous improvement. They'll do whatever it takes, they continue to try new things, they continue to try those new things and implement them with quality, with efficacy, and it's only up from here, and to keep your eyes on these guys. These are a group of, and there's, well, there's a whole bunch of them here, but every single one of them, you walk into a classroom any time of day, any week, at any time, and you're going to find high-quality instruction. Yeah. Thank you, Skyline, we're proud of you.
I think Team Stanley, we're holding on you for a double dose all in one.
Congratulations. So Sam always taller than I. Top mark. 10th, 7th, and 6th. Yeah. It's good to see you. Item 6.2, recognition of State ESEA Distinguished School Award.
Thank you, President Hines and members of the board. You're probably wondering why these good folks from Stanley Elementary are still standing up here. It's because tonight, they're a double winner. The federal government established a National Association of Elementary and Secondary Administrators that represent each state. This association acknowledges students in our schools are facing more challenges and barriers than ever before, and to overcome these challenges requires student access to and involvement in integrated, innovative, and collaborative programs. So to reward the work of schools across the country that are seeing the most success, this association created the ESEA Distinguished School Award for schools that show exceptional student performance for two or more consecutive years, close achievement gaps between student groups, and demonstrate excellence in serving special populations of students. This year, our state superintendent of public instruction selected Stanley Elementary School as one of two schools in Washington to receive the 2019 State ESEA Distinguished School Award. And it's not just an award, it comes with $10,000 for use by the school. Of the schools that have received this award over the decades, OSPI shared with us that they rarely find that the winner is a school in a large, urban, high-poverty district, because the obstacles students face to success are too great to overcome. Stanley students, teachers, staff, and community are proving everyone wrong. It can be done, it can be done well and sustained over multiple years. They're setting an example for schools across our district and across the state and the nation. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Team Stanley.
My name is Julia Hickox, I'm the principal at Stanley, and that's pretty humbling, I don't even know how to follow that, but what I'd want to do is make sure that I introduce the reason why Stanley is so special, and it's because the people that come to work every day. We have Hope, she is a student at Stanley, but she also, her grandma is a teacher at Stanley, this is Eugenia Bannenberg. Eugenia was, when I got to Stanley, a sub, and she was that sub that you would call on every single day to fill. I think she was an emergency sub at the time. She started her student teaching last year, and then we hired her in November, because we needed a teacher, and she's amazing. And then Monique Scott is our second grade teacher, she was also a student at Stanley, and her heart is, she bleeds Stanley. She's doing her admin internship this year and next year, and she just said, "When you leave, I want Stanley." And I was like, "Yes." Tanya Hendricks is, we call her a para, but at Stanley, we don't have paras, they're all teachers, and our paras are something that is really, really important to the secret sauce at Stanley. They are absolutely teachers in the classroom, working with students, and Tanya is an exceptional para. Mr. Pisanti, we stole from Michigan two years ago now, hired him over the phone as our instructional coach, and I think most of us were actually on the interview team, and we just said, "He has this sparkle, he's got to come," and we just hoped that he would make the move across the country, and he did, and his kids are now at Stanley, it's awesome. And then Mr. King and I were at Edison together, and he started out on the playground as our playground supervisor, and then I said, "God, you gotta be a teacher." So then he did his student teaching over there at Edison, and then we stole him immediately when I went to Stanley, I said, "You're coming, you're coming to Stanley with me." So Stanley is special because of the adults there that make it, it's a world-class education, it's competitive, every student is going to achieve, excel, and stretch. We were just looking at our already data before we got here, and we're questioning, "Why didn't this kid grow enough?", "Why didn't they?", you know, just question, question, question. There is absolutely no excuses, every kid is going to show up, compete, and they're going to compete with the best in the world, because when they decide what college they want to go to, or whatever they want to be when they grow up, there will not be any barriers in their way. And that is my goal as a principal, is if they want to go to Stanford, if they want to go to a trade school, if they want to go to Harvard, that door is open for them, every student, every day. And we'll let Hope speak, and then some of our staff speak, because they are what makes Stanley special.
My name is Hope Shush, and I go to Stanley Elementary. I really like the staff, because they give me an opportunity, very good opportunities and strategies. I feel cared about, and they want me to be successful at this school.
That's a proud moment for me, because she was mine last year. She's made so much growth. I think the thing at Stanley is we just give students what they need, whether that's academic, emotional, cultural, feeding them, whatever it is that they need, that's what we're there for. So I was a student at Stanley, and when I look back at that, I think, there wasn't an obstacle I couldn't overcome. I think my favorite thing to do is like defy or beat statistics, and so when I look at my students, I just think there's not a ceiling for them, there's nothing that they cannot do, there's nothing that they cannot achieve, and they know that I expect that of them, and I expect them to expect that of themselves. So having high expectations for students, and then supporting them, and giving them equity, and giving them opportunities to even go beyond what they believe that they can do, has just shown our school that there is no ceiling. Thank you.
Would you please come up, so that we can congratulate you?
Hey, before all you folks run out the door, real quickly, yep, just real quickly, as you're running out the door, we know that that secret sauce is a complete combination, and on behalf of the superintendent, on behalf of the central services, and all the principals, and all your colleagues, thank you. You know, it's more than a recognition, you said it, it is about relationship, it is about saving lives, it is about relentlessly never quitting, knowing that it takes a lifetime, and it's about partnerships, and more importantly, it's about you, so on your way home, not while you're driving, but when you get home, maybe take a moment to look in the mirror and know that we're all extremely proud of you, and we're all extremely grateful and thankful, and you are making a difference, and we recognize that. So thank you, and you have a wonderful evening.
They were running. I had to do it. Snow's coming?
No, just because they were out of there. They're like, we're done.
It's early next week, it starts to get a little suspicious. Dr. Garcia, I believe the board would echo your sentiments, are there any other board members that would like to comment? This is one of the more exciting things that we get to do. Director Bonbright.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I was really moved by everything I heard tonight, and the different parts of the secret sauce for each school, and some that were the same, but I think each one of them is individual and reflects the community in which they live, and I think that's what makes Tacoma so special, is that it isn't a one-size-fits-all district, and that's obvious. And I just say, you know, Hope gives me hope. knowing that it takes a lifetime, and it's about partnerships. And more importantly, it's about you. So on your way home, not while you're driving, but when you get home, maybe take a moment to look in the mirror and know that we're all extremely proud of you, and we're all extremely grateful and thankful, and you are making a difference, and we recognize that. So thank you, and you have a wonderful evening. They were running. I had to do it.
Snow's coming?
No, just because they were out of there.
More tonight?
Sunday or Monday?
It's early next week. It starts to get a little suspicious.
Dr. Garcia, I believe the board would echo your sentiments. Are there any other board members that would like to comment? This is one of the more exciting things that we get to do. Director Baumbruh?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I was really moved by everything I heard tonight, and the different, the different parts of the secret sauce for each school, and some that were the same. But I think each one of them is individual and reflects the community in which they live, and I think that's what makes Tacoma so special, is that it isn't a one-size-fits-all district, and that's obvious. And I just say, you know, Hope gives me hope, because she was very impressive for a third grader to be able to stand up there and speak her truth. So I'm just really, as a new board member, I am more inspired than I've, than ever. So thank you for, I'm really proud to be part of this group.
Any additional comments? Director Leon?
Yeah, I think it's really, just fills me with, you know, real sense of pride to hear the emotion that comes from these teachers and these students, and some of the words they use. I mean, the relationship, the communication, the being kind, kids feeling cared about, it's really, that's what's the most important thing. And then, of course, we need to push academics too, but you've got to have that safety net of support and health, the mental health that comes from that is critical. So I was excited to hear that.
Any additional comments?
I think you all said it all. No, I'm good. I'm just thankful for the combination of people that we have in the district. I think Dr. Garcia said it well. It just, it takes everybody. So I always am thankful to be a part of the team.
I would just add one thing. I did get to go to Edison's Winter Sing, and I will say that they didn't include in their secret sauce that the staff can sing an amazing rendition of 12 Days of Christmas, and so I would add to that, so.
And I'm competitive, so I would note that 20% of our elementary schools qualified for the list, which I think is pretty impressive, given the hundreds of elementary schools that are throughout the Puget Sound. And I appreciated seeing the geographic diversity of those elementary schools that we have, you know, for years been really working on equity, and the work is not done, but it's represented in the success that those students are having because they have competent, caring, qualified teachers in front of them every single day that are encouraging them to do well. So Dr. Garcia and Superintendent Santorino, we know that that sort of leadership starts at the top, and it's evident that people feel supported in the buildings, and the teachers are doing an amazing job in the classroom. So thank you for your leadership as well. Director Leon?
Could we hear from the student reps, too, if they have any comments?
Yes.
I definitely would like to say that I'm a real believer that how you learn as a, throughout your entire life, because learning never does stop, but it all starts with the foundation that you get in elementary school, how you learn to read, how you learn to do math. And it really is great to see how amazing the Tacoma Public Schools base is for elementary, and then just to see those students succeed through middle school, through high school, and then into, like one of the principals was talking about, into college, which getting students to think about their higher education and what they want to be doing that early is really great to see.
Thank you.
All I have to say is that relationships with your student really does matter, and I think it's important that, just having a relationship with who you teach and who you're with is just important.
Thank you. We'll move on with the agenda. Item number seven, superintendent's report.
Not necessarily a report, but just some of you folks might have seen this white moisture falling from the sky today, and we, this time of year. So just a reminder to folks that snow is in the air, literally, and we're anticipating that the weather is going to be challenging for the next couple of weeks. We have an amazing cross-departmental team that works at the crack of the morning, 1:00, 2:00, as the weather goes, drives the roads, works in all parts of town, and we will be making decisions about school if necessary, in as timely a fashion as we can. And sometimes folks wake up and they're like, "There's nothing wrong." And please just recognize that we are a fairly diverse, spread-out community. And so sometimes you can see something on the northeast side of Tacoma that you don't see on the south side and vice versa, and our job is really to look at that holistic picture as just that, a holistic picture, and make those decisions. So safe reminders, you can always check our website. You will typically get a phone call. You can always check the media outlets. We will give them the most up-to-date information as possible. And let's hope for not a lot of snow. And then my last bit of guidance is, just as you're getting your little ones off to school and your older ones off to school, simple things like hats and coats and walking safely are all really important reminders as we go. So we're anticipating a little bit of snow next week, but we're keeping our fingers crossed, and we have the fairy godmother and everyone else on our side saying, "No cancellation of schools."
All right. Thank you. Item number eight, members of public wishing to address the board?
There are none this evening.
Item number nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number 10, policy matters. There are none under consideration this evening. Item number 11, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomschools.org. About finance, we do not have an update this evening. Item number 12, curriculum and instruction. There are no business items under that category tonight. Item number 13, general business matters. We have none this evening. Item number 14, other business. 14.1, adoption of resolution number 2071, authorizing the sale of the Rialto garage.
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors adopt resolution number 2071 and improve the sale of the Rialto garage.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number 15, report to the board?
None tonight.
Superintendent, I believe there's none tonight, which brings us to item number 16, board comments and reports. I'll start with Director Keating.
I don't really have a whole lot of thoughts. Still pretty new on the job here. I did, I'm a commissioner for the Human Services Commission for the city of Tacoma, and last night we had our monthly meeting, and we're preparing for the competitive process for the city's funding. And the Beacon Hill Center is having an open house next Thursday on the 16th. It does start at 5:30, and so there's been a lot of community input, but this is a really great opportunity to go and support the work that's being done at Beacon Hill, and also support youth that are experiencing homelessness. And with the high number of students that we have in our own district that are experiencing homelessness, it's the only youth shelter in the county, and so, and it's certainly not up to capacity in terms of the needs that we have in our city. So if there are folks that have the ability to go, I would highly encourage you to go and learn what they're doing and see what their future plans are, and get to know the community that they're serving.
Thank you. Director Baumbruh?
I have nothing to add today.
Thank you. Director Leon?
Like, it's important to think about the homeless population that we have, of course, the students, especially, you know, any time of the year, and we should be thinking about it all the time, but right now it's cold, so it gets especially poignant. And with the recent move of the People's Park, people that live there, many of them into homes, tiny homes and other shelters, but there are some that have been displaced into probably not safe areas. And our goal here is to try to prevent homelessness, and we can start, we have a really big mission, and can start that at this, at this early level in schools by getting the great support, the kindness, the relationships working. It's not going to prevent all those issues for everyone in the future, but it can really make a big impact. So I think it's important to think about this. Someone mentioned the zip code issue, that, you know, shouldn't determine, your future shouldn't be determined by your zip code. It is a lot of times, but we are striving to work through these social determinants of health and education in a structured and evidence-based way to help our population. So I think our district's doing well, and we still have some ways to go to improve more.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb?
I'm losing time a little bit about when we last met because the holidays are so long ago, but I think-
December 12th.
December 12th is when we met?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I don't, was that a regular business meeting?
It was.
Yes. So I don't know if I mentioned this, though, still, even though, so on December 11th, I went to the Head Start Policy Council meeting, and I don't know if I said it in this forum, but I know I've said it to a couple of you, that I was reading through their bylaws and their organizing documents, and it calls for a report to the school board. And I know that we get kind of written reports, and some of our Friday reports and other things, but I think it would be great to hear from some of the members of the policy council, since it's primarily parents, on some of the goals that they have for the year and the work that they're doing. So if we can incorporate that into one of our board reports, I think that would be a great addition, a great group to hear from. And then on the 13th of December was our monthly JMAC meeting, and this was the time of the year when JMAC kind of reorganizes. So I just, as an update for those of you who don't sit on the, who don't serve as representatives this year, I think Andrea Smith is moving into kind of the chair role, and I'll be moving into the vice chair role, the school district's turn. So I'll keep providing updates on JMAC happenings, but just as an update for the group, some interesting things happening with the city of Tacoma within their economic development department that I think really align with some of our equity and access goals, and some of the things that we think about in terms of just opportunity. So there's a lot to report back around in that group, and I hope to do a little bit better at that moving forward. And then lastly, on a lighter note, I'm thinking about snow. I'm really looking forward to all the memes that come. I saw one today already. They're just funny. So you did a great job with the snow communications last year, so in the event that we do have it, I'm looking forward to that bright spot.
All right, thank you.
Forgot to mention, comment? So I would like to congratulate, really, our nutrition department has been doing some really amazing work with breakfast before the bell and accessing, getting, helping kids that have poor access to food that access. So there's some innovative things happening in our district. I won't go through all of them right now, but this is, there are different ways to get kids their breakfasts and their lunches in a way that's not shaming and really nutritious and tasting better and better. So well done to our nutrition department.
I'll turn to the student representatives. Do you have anything to share this evening?
I don't really have any events going on at school that I know of, but I don't know if it's too late to say that I'm blessed to have this opportunity, and I just want to congratulate you guys for the start of the new year, 2020. And I just want to say to everyone to have a safe and just a good start of the year, and end hopefully. Yeah. Definitely with, so this is January, deadlines for colleges are coming up, and that has, like that involves FAFSA and all, everything. And definitely at Wilson, and I'm sure across the district, I felt very supported in the college decision and like getting help, which has been really great through our career centers, through our counselors that have been provided through the district. And especially my friends, I have a couple of first-generation friends, and especially they have been very supportive, their teachers, their counselors. Our career center has been approaching them and saying, "Hey, what are you doing? How can I help?" And I know at Wilson, we're actually having an assembly soon that's going to be explaining how to do FAFSA, so they don't even have to go to them. It's a class that they're going to give, which has been really great.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening. However, I think I've had a chance to talk with most of you individually. A thought is, for us, we have begun on our announcement of future board meetings listing the topics, so the public can be better aware of the upcoming committee of the holes and study sessions and what will be focused on. We've been a little vague over the years with committee reports. They've been mostly discretionary, and the thought is, and we have been in a reorganization mode for a while, so some committee stiments have been filled and some have been vacant. And the idea is for us, as we fill those committees, to then list when those committee meetings are, so that the public can be aware of those committees that we serve on, and our representation and our connection out to those different community organizations, and then provide an opportunity at the following business meeting to provide a more official account. And, you know, when we had the conversation in our last study session, we talked about getting out for listening sessions. The epiphany that I had there was oftentimes we try to coordinate our five schedules to all be in the same place at the same time, and that is generally problematic. And so perhaps this creates an opportunity for us to be individually liaising to these different groups, but then coming back to the hole and reporting out so that we all can be made aware of the work that's occurring, questions, concerns, good things happening within those different constituencies. Thoughts? I see heads nodding. That's, that's a good indicator.
It's a good idea.
So we'll work to fill. I did ask Tanya to review our current committees to better understand statutorily what we are required to be a part of, and then for us to have some conversation around, are there organizations that we could have an official affiliation with from a board perspective? There's a lot of organizations that we have staff members that are a part of. But in our role as the policymakers and budget approvers and overall expectation for performance of the district, there may be some opportunities for us to be a part of these different organizations through a board or a liaison capacity. So we're in an information gathering mode right now, but I anticipate in the next week or so being able to provide back to you the analysis, and then for us to have some confirmation around those organizations that we'd like to be a part of, and to just frame it out, because it's the way my mind works, since we have been focused on goals and updates to the strategic plan and benchmarks, aligning those board obligations or those committee obligations to the different goals. So we can start to understand, oh, well, we go to the Head Start Policy Council, and that is statutorily required, and it's connected to our early learning goal. So if that methodology makes sense, we'll continue to flesh it out, and then I'll bring you all a draft copy so that we can have some conversation and finalize it, and then just start to put it in place and see how it works. Sound good? Announcement of future board meetings. Next Thursday, January 16th, we will be back for a study session that begins at 6:00 PM. We'll receive about a 30-minute presentation on the annual continuous achievement plan reports, and a 60-minute block for the next in our health and safety of students and staff policy and strategy. That will be broken into a 40-minute presentation and about, roughly 40-minute presentation and about 20 minutes for questions. And as a reminder, coming out of our last study session on the topic, we specifically asked the superintendent for more information around mental health and suicide intervention and prevention. And so the staff is prepared to come and provide us with an overview of what the district is doing around mental health, and then some more specifics around suicide intervention and prevention. Vice President Cobb?
On that topic, I think I heard kind of early interest in pursuing like conversations with students as a strategy to get more feedback on that. So I hope that I know that's still on the list, and just look forward to that conversation about how we do that moving forward.
Yes, thank you. I believe the superintendent and staff are working on some framework to bring back to us. So they heard our interest, and sooner than later, so the urgency of us wanting to get out and to be in a listening session with students, and again, how do we do it in a, the framework so that when the five of us go out, there's a, the process is the same for each of the high schools, to include somebody from the staff to come and be a note taker and a facilitator that's not us, so that we can truly just go and listen to what's working well, where there's opportunity for improvement or increased service or capacity for service. And I would, the framework, I think it was in draft form, do you have a sense of when it might be ready for review?
We will, right after the 16th, present something to you. With thought, I'll check our thinking here, is that you folks wanted to hear that 16th, so you would be able to have some consistency in your questions with the students. And so right after that 16th or part of that 16th, you're going to want to be able to think about, so what do we want to hear specifically from students, or what are the topics? And that will help us organize the students, invite the students, and prepare the students to say, "Well, the school board would like to talk to you about these topics." And they'll, of course, bring their own voice to that conversation, but we thought that was important for you guys to take this broader topic, and as we continue to narrow it down and educate, the 16th will be, as President Hines mentioned, a high level of overview, but it will be pretty heavy in presentation, just to give you a lot more background. We heard from you very clearly, you wanted a little more background, and then you'd go out and talk to those students. And so I really anticipate that you'll probably really start to get out into the schools last part of January, early part of February, just in a natural flow.
Vice President Cobb?
And I think that the idea came up at a committee of whole, and I don't think our student board members were there, so in between, I'd love to get their feedback on. Does this resonate?
encourage the county to pursue a 1/10th of 1% mental health tax. And at the meeting on the December 12th, I suggested that we provide a letter that would be sent to Pierce County Executive Dan Meyer, and to Doug Richardson, the Chair of the Pierce County Council, and then circulate that letter to all the Pierce County School Districts to see how many people we could, how many districts we could get in support of it. And I anticipate having that draft letter for review next week at the 16th. So I know I've heard from each of you some thoughts on, we don't want to only encourage a pot of money, we also want to provide some perspective on how we might invest that money if we were fortunate enough to have that pass. So look for that on the 16th as well. And then we'll be back here on Thursday, January 23rd, for a regular business meeting at 6:00 PM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Deputy Superintendent, anything to add?
All right, we are adjourned.